On the ballot for November.
So that's not, we didn't talk about that.
Then you misled me then if this I'm not right.
Hold on, hold on. We did not talk about that today. You may have misunderstood the way the sequence needs to go. What I said to you very clearly was you need to approve it tonight. Worst case, the next meeting, an absolute worst case, to be able to have the runway to be done and put it on the ballot to the elections office by June for the November ballot. And that's the articulation I have provided to all the council members who have asked that question.
Okay, well, I think we're wordsmithing here a little bit.
No, no, we're not. I want to be very clear. No, we are not.
I believe you. I believe you. All right, we have these four areas. And I think what we're going to have to do is take them one at a time and individually vote on those. All right, so the first one is review the five-year financial forecast for 24 to 28. Any recommendation from my colleagues here on the, on that item?
We didn't need to make a motion on that one, right? We're just reviewing it. So that one we're okay?
I'm just trying to be sure. I don't want to cut this thing short.
We're good.
So we don't have to do anything on it. Thank you very much. Moving on to the second item. We need to approve the revised reserve policy. So there we go. Please, a motion or any discussion further?
Well, I was just probably going to open it up to you and ask, you said you had reservations about it. Do you want to share what those are so that maybe the rest of us understand what they are and it can be clarified? And then we vote?
Well, when you, so if 40% is not your comfort zone.
It isn't. That's why I brought it up.
So what would be your comfort zone? And then maybe we can work from there. What would be, you know, what would be your comfort zone?
Closer to 60%. Did I hear a remark?
I said, ooh, because we're already at seven, 70, 75. We're at 75 now. You're willing to cut it to 60, but most other cities.
I'm not willing to take it to 40. That's my point.
I understand, but most other cities have 20 and 30%. We're going above that. I under, but you're not comfortable with it. That's fair. That's fair.
That's all, that's all I have to say. Thank you. Okay, so that's, that's that one. Does anybody want to make a motion on that? Oh, Mr. Clovin.
No, and just, just, just because the money. 40% is reserved, not, and you just, we can't spend that because that's our, that's our fund that we just can't touch. Doesn't mean that the other 60%, or no, more than 60%, because actually we have 7.7. Yeah, whatever, the other funds are going to be spent. That's up to the city council to make those conscious decisions where those funds are spent for a specific project, whether it be ballfolds or ADA improvements, et cetera. I mean, just because we were changing how much money is untouchable, doesn't mean we have to spend the other stuff. It's still a conscious decision of the council to spend the other monies in the future. Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, and that, that's kind of why I'm comfortable with it as well, because even at 75, the rationale still holds. You can still make a decision to spend it below 75 essentially at any time. So whether or not we, so designating it one way or another doesn't actually spend it. So that's why, you know, that is, that is at the discretion or direction of the council, working with staff to execute whatever decisions are made. So I, I think that one is, that seems okay.
And I move approval.
Now, if, if you are more comfortable with like 50, it's really in name only because we could always spend it down at any time with the, with the, you know, with the concurrence of the council.
It just strikes me that we're breaking precedent that goes way back, that we never touched it unless it was an absolute emergency.
That's true, and I do think that in practice, we could still operate that way.
Yeah.
If we want, but it would, you know, each of those spending decisions would happen on a case-by-case basis already. And so the risk is relatively low on, on that one. That's how I would, that's how I would think about it. That's how I think about it.
Okay.
I concur.
And with that, I'd like to move approval of the reserve policy as it's been written.
I'll second.
Moved by Councilmember Clovin, seconded by Councilmember Tillman. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Yes, on that motion, Clovin?
Aye.
Tillman?
Aye.
Juan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Trippiano?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Yes.
Thinking motion passes. Five ayes.
That takes. Who said this was not a 5-0? Anyway. Okay, approving the resolution to, they do the adjustment of putting them in these assignments into these buckets.
Is that the same one? No, that's a different one.
Move approval.
Moved by, seconded, Councilmember Tillman, approved, seconded by Councilmember Clovin. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Thank you. Councilmember Clovin?
Aye.
Tillman?
Aye.
Juan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Trippiano?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Yes, thank you. Okay, my goodness, another. Wait a minute, did we just vote 5-0? Excuse me. All right. Okay, now, we're going to go on to the last one, which is the ballot initiative for 2024 November. And that, that one, you know, and again, I'm not, at this point, I'm inclined, because that's the only one that seems to be palatable and could be facilitated easier than any of the other options. But it appears we have several options within that one. Is that correct? We have, we can do it a half a percent or we can do a full percent.
Or you could do in between, do three quarters of a percent if you wanted to. I, I think.
Or one and a half.
Or, no, you can't go over the statutory. We do not have time to go to the legislature to increase your statutory limit, but other than that, yes. So I think what I heard was a couple of things. One, you can pick half a cent, or half percent, or 1%, knowing a half percent won't solve your budget problem fully over the forecasted period, and we'd have to do some level of cut still to get there, which would be less service delivery impact, but still be service delivery impact. You could do the full percent. You could decide to adjust the reserves to put more in the budget stabilization reserve and buoy this conversation to 2028, if you feel it's more palatable, which is a reasonable option to take if you'd like to go in that direction. So that's maybe option three. You can do, as Councilmember Juan articulated, where you look at 2026 in a much different light and you say, we educate the entire community moving forward to a parcel tax in 2026 that takes away the separation of funding. It also lowers the threshold. So if the parcel tax, because it's a specific tax, requires 67% of the vote. If you were to change it to a general parcel tax, it would only need 50% plus one. Just to give you a sense of numbers, the equivalent increase in the parcel tax relative to the sales tax would be about $180 to $190 more. So it goes from 280 to 470 essentially, to do that and have a sort of apples-to-apples revenue comparison. So that's also another option. And so I know that's a lot, but you have, all of those and/or zero don't do anything at your disposal, I think, in, in what you might want to move forward with.
Can you repeat those last numbers you just said, please?
Yeah, so, so, go ahead, sorry, Councilmember Juan.
So right now, the LMD is at about 280 per person?
Correct.
And so if we were to incorporate the LMD and the impact of what would otherwise be attainable with a 1% sales tax, then in 2026, or even 2024, you could do it.
You could, yeah.
You would replace the 280 and replace the 280 with, call it 470.
Sure.
And that would cover all of your needs.
Correct.
Plus, it would only require a 50% threshold, which is more attractive because it's easier to get. So that's why, like, the difference of a general tax versus a specific tax, and then not, you know, it, it's something to consider. And I'm not sure what the best way is, because I think you'll have, that's where you really need analysts to help you out. But.
Yeah.
A lower threshold is a benefit, but then again, specific taxes are sometimes easier to sell because it goes towards a certain thing. You do need a, was it two-thirds, or 67?
67, essentially, 66.6 plus a vote, so 67.
So you need a two-thirds, you need a two-thirds threshold to pass it versus a straight majority. You know, historically, the LMD has passed by about 75%-ish. So it has always cleared the two-thirds, except for the first time it went out. I think the very first time it went out, it didn't pass and they did it again. If I remember my history right. I wasn't here at the time. But, you know, that's the real, I mean, that to me is a real consideration. Like, what is more feasible? Because if we're talking about setting up the, I mean, you know, you do a sales tax for 1%, it has built-in inflation protection. You're essentially built, like other cities, you're essentially building something that would cover most of the city's needs on a go-forward basis for at least the midterm, mid to longer term, more than the short term, let's say. But you'll still build in this, then the very following year, or sorry, very following election year, you need to go back and ask for more money for the LMD. And then you also, so you'll need the higher threshold for that. And you'll also need to continue this, the, one of the, I think, one of the more inefficient operations of the city is moving the money through the various buckets so that you could satisfy the requirements of the LMD. If you do it as a general, you don't have to do that. Like, we, we're moving, I mean, like, when, when Ron was here, you know, we talked about an illustration to show a dollar in and how it gets moved. I mean, it's, it's very, it's, how do I describe it? It's like a Rube Goldberg machine. It's very complex and it's a tracking exercise. We do it already with our, all the transportation funds. And, you know, you could use HUDA and you could use FUDA and you could use Measure J and you could use whatever. And you're going to take eight funding sources to do one thing. And staff has to do that, and they have to track it and they have to audit it. And you're, you're creating areas that are like setting up things for you to fail on. But if you do it all together, you don't. And then you could just focus on doing the work instead of the three-card monte of the money. So that, that's why I'm, I'm thinking about both of them together, and I think they have to, and that's the discussion. That is like, that's an operational efficiency.
So if I could add, if I could add to that, the, the, the one benefit of having it all in one is also you're having one conversation with your community.
Yes.
Which, to be frank, can be easier. I think what council would have to be very comfortable with, from my perspective, is that you essentially are going to buoy your current service delivery model for two fiscal years to do that. And that's fine. I've done that in other agencies. It's a very reasonable approach to take. You have clearly enough reserves to do that without issue.
Not if we do it in 2024.
You can't.
Well, you could, you could, you could.
Except they're going to pay twice, because they already have to pay the.
No, you replace one.
You can't. You can't take the LMD away because, you cannot. Okay.
I would have to ask council, because I, we'd have to, it would have to be a really good legal review of, can we rescind the future one that's currently there? I don't know the legality of that fully. I will tell you, though, if you're going to combine them both, the more time you give for the conversation and the runway is probably better in that case, because that's a lot to explain to the community about why you're not having it separated, the benefits of having it one, how this will do X, Y, and Z, you know, flexibility with funding and use of priority. And, I mean, there are a lot of benefits to it for sure, but I would, I would recommend then, if that ever, if this becomes council's desire on the dais tonight, I would recommend that you do it in 26 and give yourself the runway to do it.
I mean, plus, there's this idea that, you know, we've done a lot of activity over the last year to really assess where we are. Like, we've looked at, you know, both in terms of policy, in terms of spend, in terms of like, how we track and what we're, what we're tracking. I mean, I think, you know, there's a litany of things that we've done in 2023. And that, you know, the, the, the commitment that I always made was, it has to be the last resort and we have to be, we have to be able to do everything possible before we go for money or revenue. It's a weird euphemism. But before we go for revenue, and to, to be able to demonstrate that, show that we've done all this work and this is the only other choice left to us. And we can say that, but then we're going to say that for 2024 for sales, and then we're going to say it again in 2026. And that, to me, is less palatable. I don't know. So that's, that's why I think, I don't know, that's why I'm on the fence.
My perspective is that we're not asking for anything new in 2026. We're asking for a re-upping of the LMD with, with an escalator to cover cost of living cost. So going back, say, hey, listen, you like your land, your, your, your trails and landscaping and medians. This is sunsetting and that, those fundings go away unless you, so it's, 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 it's not a new thing. It's reintroducing what they're already paying. So that, that's, the marketing aspect of that, sure, we have to do some effort on that, but it's not the same as something brand new, like this package deal, what you're talking about. I think there's justification in the numbers, both in Rena's numbers and in Brett's numbers, to show that there is a need for the sales tax. And the reason why I like it as an attempt this year is that it starts the education of the public. Even if for some reason we don't educate them enough and it gets turned down, and we have to pivot to your suggestion in 2026, we, we need to start getting the public aware of what's going on, and it's clear from the surveys that they don't know the, the need that exists. So starting us now with, with the sales tax that, while you call it regressive, I don't see it as that because the people who are, pay more in their sales taxes are paying the same amount in Concord where they're shopping anyways. So I mean, I, I get what you're saying, but.
Well, I mean, sales taxes are by definition regressive than a parcel tax.
My, my point is, people are already paying that tax.
True.
So they, so it's, it's, it's not a hard sell for that, that, that extra, I mean, that 1%. If you go shop across the street, you're going to pay more anyway, so why not pay the same in Clayton? So it's, it's, it's a little simpler, and it gets the idea across that there's a need. And then we can come back and give them in 2026, hey, this thing sunset, if you like your trails and landscaping, we need to re-up this. And there's an escalator because of inflation.
I mean, that, that continues, I mean, that continues the same segregation of funding, though. I mean, because I, I guess, is that the, is that the model that we want? Because if you're going to, if we're going to say, do you like your trails and landscape, you're essentially saying, this is only for trails and landscape. But I think the better, or maybe not better, the, a different story is, do you want to fund the operations of the city, among which Trails and Landscape is a part? Like, that's, that's the, the more broader discussion.
So can I offer another option then, to incorporate what Councilmember Juan is saying versus what we're trying to accomplish as well? Is, could we not then, in 2024, I know we're saying one, one, the 1% or 1 cent, make it slightly higher to encompass what the LMD would, would bring in if we were to exclude having.
Yeah, I think it's too high.
You can't because just that you, 1% puts you at the statutory limit and we would have to go to the legislature. We don't have time.
Okay, we don't want to do that. Okay, so then, then I'm still back to what I originally said. So scratch that. I, I do agree not having to go back several times. And I'm all for operational efficiencies, but if we already have, unless we're going to say, as a council, because this is something I had asked, is to bring back all of the special districts, like the streetlight and the stormwater and LMD, et cetera, at some point. Are we saying that we want to get away from having any of the special districts? And I would look at our city attorney and say, is that an option? Are we able to do that and have it all under one bucket? So once they sunset, just let them all sunset and don't even inform the community? Can you tell me how those mechanics work? Is it dead?
Yeah, is it, is it dislodged from the seating?
Maybe put it down. At the bottom, at the base, down here.
From the base of the microphone?
There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. They're, they're all governed under different statutory schemes, so I don't think this is an answer you're going to get tonight.
That's fine. That's okay.
But can I, there is a thing that would relate to that.
Go ahead.
Because if you, if we go for a general, while we, you may not be able to eliminate stormwater or whatever, maybe you can, maybe you can't, but you could always supplement them with general fund dollars. So, so like, what you would do is, you would look at your total need, incorporating landscape, incorporating what we're talking about here, and the deficits that exist within stormwater and the deficits that exist within streetlight, and say, this is the number. So what, what did you say was a one, I don't know, some number. You know, if you add another $5 or $10 to it, then you, then you cover that as well. And it's a way to solve, it's a way to really solve the problems. So that, that's why it's appealing to me. And I don't know if it's 2024 or 2026, you're saying, you, you had mentioned earlier, 2026 is better because then you're not having this weird overlap.
Yeah, potential overlap issue, and if we're going to do the, the big conversation around it, which has some value, for sure, time is needed to explain that to.
Yeah, because like, this is the first time we're presented with it, and the suggestion is, well, we should just approve it right now, which is fine, but at the same time, it's like, if we, if we take the time, we can get something that I would say is objectively better.
Or we can continue on with this one this evening, and since we just approved the assignments for our reserve bucket, if, if, knowing that at any point we can use some of those funds, however we needed to, could we not still inform the community on what's happening with the LMD? Choose then as a council, if we want to, to sunset it and let it sunset in 2027? And then know that in future budgets, we're going to have to allocate funds to cover the maintenance. So we know we have the 1% sales tax. I think in your forecast, you had, what was it, 750,002? Was it a million each?
Yeah, at a million, but at 750 is probably a more conservative estimate to you.
So we know that that's how much it is bringing in each year, which we know that we need to do all of the things that we need to do. But I do think that there's no reason to delay going forward with exactly what we're saying, the 1% TUT this year, informing the residents about what we need to do for the, the LMD, and possibly any of the other districts, and then adjust our budgets in the future years accordingly. There's no reason to wait.
Brett, can I also have you weigh in on something we talked about earlier today, too, which is the reserve fund of the LMD? Are you able to speak to that?
Yeah, so you have about 300, I mean.
I wasn't aware of that.
$350,000 left in, in LMD reserve that, you know, is now just buoying something we would do in the future with it. So, I mean, look, it is truly council's choice. There are a variety of ways to do this. You could probably find positives and pitfalls in every single one of them, if I had to be honest. It's really what do you all collectively feel like you can get behind? Because I'll also say that even if four of you vote for it, but we're not all rowing in the right direction, it still comes hard to get 50% of a vote when, when you may have outliers not wanting to really support it. And so the ultimate goal here is not to solve a two-year or a four-year problem, it's to solve a 10-year problem, right? Just for sake of conversation and beyond. So however the council can best get behind together, whatever that is, and agree to something that you're going to go towards, and that be the mission of the council and staff, whether it's '24, it's '26, whether it's sales tax, whether it's one big parcel tax, it's important, I think, to find that way, if you can, together. Because, you know, I think then we're all rowing in the same direction. And so I don't know, I've heard a lot of ideas, a lot of good ideas up here, and I don't feel like we've got enough consensus in any direction on it yet. And so I implore you to keep talking until you do, or direct me to, or somebody to bring this back with a little bit shorter of a runway, but to have additional discussions down the line. And maybe if it's not the next meeting, then maybe, you know, sometime in April, if that would help, or if, but if the decision's still going to be the same decision, you know, maybe more discussions needed with all of you.
And the, the other thing that I'm, I appreciate that, the, the other thing that I'm thinking about is that the timing is really critical here with the uncertainty over, you know, who's going to be in the seat and who's going to do the work. Plus, the time benefits us. The more time we take, the more it benefits us. It, I don't know, it just, it seems, it seems somewhat rushed and not fully baked to do it right now versus really, like, you know, we could utilize the, the reserve to shore us up and then really say, 2026 is the year. We go 2026, that's what we plan on. We spend the time from now, maybe not right now, but we spend a sufficient amount of time up until that point, we'll have more, we'll have someone in the seat that can really carry the flag and help us with that, and we can do that. And then, you know, we can be thoughtful about wrapping it all together and figuring out what we, what the actual need is, how best to address it within all the operations of the city. And I think that tells a really good story. So that, that's kind of how I'm thinking about it.
So that kind of comes back to the idea that Brett and I discussed today, which is kind of live off the reserves till we can get.
I mean, yeah, I think that's good if we have a plan.
Right, if we have a plan.
Yeah.
Okay, any further?
But, hold on a second.
Okay.
But that plan has to.
Final thought.
Yeah, maybe, maybe. Right, just right here, we have different ideas about what that should be. So I, so I think that we have to, like, I agree that we have to all be together on what it is because that will be the strongest, well, I don't want to say that, that's not, that's not a good way to say it. It would be nice if we were all together, because then it would, we would be able to present the most compelling rationale. So that's why I'm trying to like elaborate on why I think that is a better path. I, I do, I really think, from a city perspective, if you were to greenfield how you want to do your funding, you would never do special funds. You only do that because you're trying to get, you're trying to persuade people to pay for a certain thing. But that's not the ideal way to do anything. Like, it's not. And I, I assume that you agree with this. Now, there may be realities why you do that.
Yeah, there's going to be state mandates sometimes that make you, but generally, you have the most discretion as a council when it is fully discretionary money.
And you have a lower vote threshold.
Well, yeah.
Oddly enough.
Yes.
So, you know, that is, if we want to set the city up in the future for like structural stability, parcel taxes are the most stable. It has the lowest vote threshold. It gives the city the most ability to operate. It's all wins.
Can I ask a quick question?
I feel like we're in Groundhog State, talking about a parcel tax again. Go ahead.
My, my question is, is, is pretty simple. I'm not disagreeing with you, okay? And I think there's, there's.
All right, case closed.
No, 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 hang on, hang on. There, 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 there may be some utility in, in how we frame the LMD tax or whatever that's going to be in 2026, and call it something else which has funds that can pay for LMD and public safety and a bunch of other things that we need that, and, and call it, and, and bring down the vote threshold. But why does that not, why, why would that preclude us from, from having a 1% sales tax that brings us even with most everybody else in County Costagrande?
It's asking for money twice.
The, the, the sales tax is, is, is something that I, I think is going to be a fairly easy sell because you just put that table that we're going to be equal to Concord next door, which you're paying anyways when you go over to, to whatever. Costco, or, or buy a car there. I mean, it, it, it's, it's, it's a. Costco, or, or buy a car there, I mean, it, it, it's, it's, it's a pretty easy sell, and we could do that this year, because it gets the need out to our, our, our residents, and then wrap this LMD tax as a larger ball which covers public safety and other things that we need, and it's already prepping our residents for where we are, and what our needs are. So, this, I, I think the, the TUT, the, the sales tax, is, 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 is kind of low-hanging fruit and a great way to, to educate our, our residents, and I don't think it's gonna be, it's, there are gonna be people who have a challenge with it, when you start showing Orinda, Maraga, and Concord as examples, and, and many others have the same sales tax that you're already paying when you go to their cities anyways, it's not gonna be.
Yeah, I don't think that that's a bad argument. I think that if you do that, you are more likely to preclude the better argument in '26. So, you could, I, I, I agree with you, I think it's not an insurmountable sell for 2024 for sales. Like, I think that we can do that, probably. But at the same time, I think if you do that, it almost forces the result that you cannot do the general in 2026 then, because you would have people like me who would say, well, you just got revenue, now you want more general revenue, revenue after revenue, and so, that, and that, I think that's what Brett was saying earlier as well, like, if you're gonna do that, you want to do it one time for what you need versus two times, and so, and that's fine, I think that's a fine choice, if you say, I like having the LMD, and that's like, that segregation so that we can show the residents that this is what your funds are doing, and you have a, a discrete bucket and to utilize, and you have Erin and her colleagues to be able to go on, you know, to help direct all that, um, that's fine, like, that's a viable alternative, but I just don't think you can do both.
I, I am, I'm thinking that you could wrap, instead of the LMD coming up, you can do a, a general fund measure which includes funds for the LMD, and, and do the, have the, have the utility to do a one with it then in 2026, and be able to market it as such, instead of upping your LMD.
I think what you're suggesting is, why can't we do both?
Why couldn't we? And I, 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 I think there's, it's basically saying it's the LMD, but instead of the LMD, now it's, it's, we're calling it this, which, which funds the, uh, what was the LMD, but not in the same way, because.
Yeah, it would, I mean, it would, it wouldn't be the LMD anymore.
It would, but the funds from this would, would be given to our maintenance department that do LMD work, correct?
I mean.
If, if we chose to fund it?
If I could just interrupt for some technical help, you'd have to be very careful about not saying it was the LMD with the general tax overlay, because we would get sued and we would lose. So, um, yeah, so when, when we say it would be general tax, means you could use it for porta-potties, police, LMD type of stuff, it doesn't matter, right, whatever, general government operations, and so, I just want to be cautious that we could, we could get stuck in a sticky wicket if we thought about it in that way.
So, could, I, I can, I can feel actually the, um, the angst of having to, to go back multiple times, but what if we do a different variation? November, sales tax 1% this year, let the LMD sunset in 2027, and then that lets you go in 20, you don't have to go in '26, you can go in '28, figure out all of the other ones, and we can figure out all the other districts, and we can figure out, are we gonna fund the LMD, do we want the, um, whatever, name it, the safety, safety tax, whatever, all of them, and put, public safety, do that in '28 if necessary, but it doesn't stop us from doing what we need to do in '24. Why are you about to grab yourself?
I think that would be really problematic.
I don't think you have enough money.
Yeah, you would run out of money very quickly, because, because you're gonna lose a million dollars a year in '27, '28, and you won't collect it until '29, and that's only assuming if you do it in '28. So, you're gonna be in the hole, I think the LMD gets funding of 1.1 million.
1.3.
It's 1.3.
1.3, okay, sorry, so you're gonna lose 1.3 for two years.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, you're making that argument for going in '26, which is not the same time as '24.
Yeah, I mean, you.
It's not that same, it's not at the same time.
If you don't, if we don't do anything in '24, you force the hand in 2026.
Can I make a suggestion? Because, only because it's four votes that are needed to move this thing forward, and I, I'm not seeing four votes right now, maybe I'm wrong. Here's the thing, my historical review of what's gone on here in the last five or six years is that we have never agreed to the plan, stuck to the plan, and politics has gotten in the way. What I'm asking the council today is, it sounds like, and I don't know, correct me if I'm wrong, that there may be enough sway on the council to do one large parcel tax in 2026, but I'm sensing that there may be a little concern that election cycles in between that and/or other things could derail what you otherwise suggest, right? So, it's a little bit of a leap of faith. I think if the council publicly states that they want to do something, like a parcel tax in 2026, and that can garner five of you to agree to it, and you give staff direction to do that work, your next budget cycle that you're gonna be going through here pretty quickly, you put the effort into the consultants, I know that's a bad word, and things needed to start in July with the educational campaigns, you use your TLC, because they're gonna be a big part of that funding mechanism, even though it'll be general government, to help be the Blue Ribbon Committee and all the things, and you start putting into motion the reality, so essentially, it would be hard for any election, although they're legally allowed to, that would change anything in November, to uproot what is the path that you all have chosen to be best for the city. To me, that, if that gets five of you to row in the same direction, that's the best chance the community has to be sustainable for the next 15 years. Wasn't my idea coming in, but I think if we can't, otherwise, I think we either are here till four in the morning and don't get anything anywhere, or we don't get enough votes for anything and it dies on the vine, which means essentially, we start in the, the austerity measure, and then maybe another time down the line, we try this again. But that's my suggestion, if, if that helps kind of bring us together.
Thank you very much. You have any more, your lights? Thank you very much, it's, the debate was very interesting and very enthusiastic, and I thought we have thoroughly gone through this more so than I ever thought, it, it's really been very helpful, and appreciate everybody's comments on that. Yes?
I would support what you just said for '26.
So, to be clear, we would then be getting direction to focus staff efforts on a general parcel tax in 2026, directing staff to develop a budget that includes the necessary funding to start moving forward with the applicable team, broadly speaking, that we would need to have to be able to make a successful effort occur, and bringing that as part of the budget. So, essentially, effective July 1, when your budget's approved, whoever sits in this seat, along with staff, can move forward with that plan judiciously over the next 18 months to get it passed in November of '26.
Yeah, and a lot of, yeah, that's, I, yes, that's what I was saying, and a lot of the reason is because of the, we need to make sure that we have the person that can carry the flag to do that, and I think that will be an exercise, and it gives us the time to really assemble a cohesive message, so, that's, that's why I think that's preferable at this time. And I think with all the work that we've done over the past, whatever, amount of time, I think we've, we've done and what we committed to do, for the most part, in that really looking and taking a hard look at what is available to us, and now is the time to set us up for, set the city up for stability going forward. Like, and if we do this, and it's successful, then we would be, we would have that stability, like, for the mid to long term.
So, just between now and then, though, right, we're living off of.
Yeah, I would recommend, I would have to come back with a consent item, essentially to redo the resolution about where we broke down the funds, and I would want to put probably, 24, 25, 26, probably a million and a half in your assignment for budget stability to give you flexibility, and I would just take it from capital, technology, vehicle, and pension, some version of that, to fund it, so you have enough potential buffer, if you needed it, to use each budget cycle to get to the time you're talking about.
Okay.
Which is reasonable.
Yeah, and I think if we have that plan, that works, because you need, you can't do it without the plan.
So, that, correct, and I know this is gonna be tough, but you're gonna have to trust each other that that's the plan we're gonna continue to move to, because if you don't, if you bridge and that plan gets blown up for whatever reason, political or otherwise, now you're in trouble, because the whole thing is on its face, basically, at that point.
I mean, it's a, it's a burn-the-ships moment.
I swear we did this two years ago, and we all five agreed, and then a couple meetings later, it was a different, a different scenario, um, which is why I'm hesitant to not go forward with what's being proposed right now, because we all live in Clayton, and we know that it, it can literally change in two hours from what we just now sat here and agreed, and I, I'm feeling that there wants to be some trust here, and I would love to be really where we are, um, but it's, it's, it's difficult to know that we continue to have these conversations just about every year, every 18 months, and literally have done nothing to move us forward. So, that's my, that is why I'm hesitating, is because my fear is, we're gonna, we're gonna make a motion, we're gonna say, let's do this in '26, people in the community are gonna find out, they're gonna get super loud and have a fit, and then we're gonna come back and nothing, staff is never gonna, there's, there's gonna be these constant roadblocks, which is why it's, it's like banging your head up against the wall for staff who come in and want to get things done. So, if we're gonna do this, I would say, it, it really has to be done. I wouldn't count on the TLC folks going out there to go, because they just said, we just got fired, so why are we gonna go help? I'm not kidding, like, we really need to be thoughtful on, on how this, how this gets put out to the residents, who's really doing the footwork behind it, the cohesive message, which we all thought that we had two years ago, and then we didn't, because only three of us were doing the work, after five of us voted on it. That's my hesitation.
It's your pleasure.
What I would say is, um, to the, to the TLC, it provides more flexibility, it really does provide more flexibility for you to use whatever surplus of funds to fund trails in a more meaningful way, and not only be restricted to what comes into that pot, because you can't use it for other operations. So, it's, it's, it provides the flexibility for it to be a much more ongoing conversation at council about it, right, and puts the onus back on council to fund trails and things, frankly, and doesn't push it off just on a subcommittee, and they could still be advocates for that reality, that frankly, might have more strength and weight than the current structure.
Even if we didn't have a TLC, we could still have an advisory coming in.
Thank you.
Well, and the other thing is too, is that we didn't do nothing tonight, right? The reserve policy is, that's a big lift, so, um, make, make a motion, somebody?
Yes, we've, we've been waiting.
I don't, I would, um, I don't even know what the motion would be. Can you, can you give us guidance on the motion?
What I'm thinking, I'm hearing, is the motion would be to provide staff direction to come for two things, one, to plan accordingly in the fiscal year 24, '25 budget, to budget for the appropriate resources needed to fund and successfully achieve a 2026 parcel, general parcel tax campaign, and direction to move forward to plan on a general tax on the 2026 ballot, parcel tax on the ballot. And we will have to come back with all the official stuff around that, but it gives direction, so when we're developing the budget, they know that has to be a priority, when they're doing work and, and looking at initiatives, they know that, that's, this is a priority over the next 18 months, and they need to come back with all the subsequent official things to, to get that to happen. I think 18 months on something like that is a real runway, so you will be starting in July, um, to, to do it well.
I would make that motion, I mean, that's essentially all in.
I'll second it.
Moved by Juan, seconded by Vice Mayor Kim Trupiano. Would, would the city clerk please take the roll?
So, I'm, I'm just wanna confirm, we are, if we were to say yes to this, 100% unanimous that we are putting a parcel tax on the ballot in 2026, which we're gonna support as a council, is that what I'm hearing?
Concur.
I just want to make sure that we're, we're all, this is, this is not something that can be pulled back, that we're actually, this is in the moment right now.
This is the first time we've actually ever voted on it. And I think it's appropriate, so that's why I made the motion, but.
Okay, thank you very much, will the city clerk please take the roll?
Thank you, Councilmember Clovin.
With that understanding, aye.
Tillman?
I'm gonna vote no, only because I think it should be a sales tax and a TUT, not a parcel tax, where it's only our residents paying for it, but I support it, and I will help you if this passes, for sure.
Juan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Trupiano?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes with four ayes, with, uh, Councilmember Tillman dissenting with the no vote.
Thank you so much, again, thank you all for the thorough analysis and discussion on this item. We're now gonna take a 10-minute break, be back at about 11:05, thank you.
Recording stopped.
Where's the cake?
Oh, the cake.
Oh, I don't know.
Okay. Calling the meeting back to order at 11:05 as advertised. Okay, we're calling the meeting back to order, and because it's after 11, procedurally, we have to vote on, we will continue with the next agenda item.
Aye.
Well, I didn't, I'll ask, I need a motion on that. I'll move, I'll move it.
Second.
Okay, it's moved to second. Would you please take the roll?
Thank you for clarity. Was that the mayor that moved?
It was.
What?
You moved the item, mayor?
I moved Juan's second.
And on that motion, Councilmember Clovin?
This is to continue.
To continue.
Aye.
I mean, you don't, you don't have to vote for it.
Aye. Juan?
Have we gotten, where are we on that?
We're at 3-2 currently. Vice Mayor Trupiano?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz?
Yes.
Thank you, you have five.
Okay, we now are moving on to item 8A, which is a discussion on possible revisions to the purchasing policy as requested on the February 6 meeting. And right now, we'll turn it over to the city manager to give us a wonderful dissertation.
Yeah, so this is requested by Councilmember Juan to come back to the council to review aspects of the purchasing policy. Staff's opinion and recommendation is just to leave the policy as is. It's been successful. Started with RENA, I think, getting this approved two years ago, roughly. We've just continued with it, making adjustments related to SB 1383 was the last revision. With that, happy to answer any questions.
Are there no differences between this one and the previous one that RENA had that was approved?
Just the SB 1383 changes that you approved.
As far as the spending power, is it exactly the same as it was before?
It's the same, correct, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comment? Nope, go ahead.
I don't have any questions. I just have discussion.
I don't have any questions.
You don't have anything?
No, I'm just waiting to...
God, I'm shocked. So...
Public comment?
I do not have any public comment online or any cards.
Okay, public comment, right. I don't know, does anybody out there want to speak on this item? Yep, don't all rush up here. Okay, and there's no one online. So we will close the public comment on this item and bring it back.
Yeah, so I asked for this item, so thank you for that. I think you said it was 8A, but it's 8B, but regardless. You know, I think this is a policy that we had approved back when RENA was here. But in the subsequent time, you know, what I've noticed is a trend that we are, you know, there's a couple things that are different. One, you know, we've been more acutely aware of our financial position as a city. And two, the instances of spending under the policy, I think, warrants more scrutiny. And so, as, you know, as a procedural matter, what we do is we look from time to time at the policy to see if it meets our needs. And, you know, for me, I think it's pretty clear that the engagement of consultants on things that are a gray area, that I don't necessarily think we need to do, or certain spending that are not necessarily within the goals of the council, I think we need to have a more robust review of. And so what I would suggest is that we reduce the spend authority on the consultant piece only. There's two tiers. So there's consultant's piece, and then there's the, I forget what we called it, but there's the second tier. But only affecting the first tier, I would say we reduce to 10. And then we also create a mechanism that anything of, you know, any consultant's spend that is exercised under that gets some kind of periodic report out, so that it's highlighted. I think the most recent example is either at the end of January of this year, or the beginning of February, we engaged, we renewed or extended our existing contract with REPT. REPT is the platform for, you know, community engagement and the Q&amp;A component, yeah, Ask the City. And so what we did was, we, you know, we, the total spend was exactly at the limit, so it didn't need to come to us for approval. It was exactly at $30,000 in total. And at the same time, it was for an 18-month period, and there's no cancellation for this agreement. And so it essentially locks us in for this spend. And I'm not sure, maybe it's good, or maybe it's bad. But I think that's something that we should really have, you know, initially it was a pilot, and it was like a couple thousand bucks. It was like, okay, let's try it out. That seems fine. But if we're going to engage in a platform that is going to carry us for 18 months, then I think that's something that we should discuss, if that's the direction we want to go. And so, it's, I mean, that's just one example, but it is of that nature that I think lowering the threshold would allow us to give better policy direction on those things. So that would be what I would suggest.
So, REPT, by all accounts, people I've spoken to in the city have been highly, highly appreciated and reviewed. And the communication that goes between the city manager and his staff in answering those questions and how it's received has been incredibly positive. And it has been a great way for transparency between what the citizens want answered and the city staff. That we as council members, which wouldn't be answered, it's been answered by staff. So, in that perspective, I don't see the REPT contract per se as being the reason for rescinding a $30,000 spend. Do you have another example of something that has less to do with transparency in the city that I can sink my teeth into?
Yeah, so like, when we were in the Special Events Committee, you know, we have a budget established. And then, you know, what we were told was, we can exceed that amount by the authority of the city manager's $30,000. And I just think that the, with the direction that we're going, with what we just talked about earlier in the evening, like, we need to demonstrate as a council and a city, the, a level of fiscal rigor to really, to be convincing, to show that we're walking the walk, or is it, walking the talk is the expression. And I just think, like, having a looser spending policy doesn't support that goal. So, that's, I mean, we can disagree, but that's why I think that way.
I think I disagree. I think that we hire a city manager to run the city. And there are certain things the city manager has to have the ability to do in order to run a city. We, as a city council, do not run a city, and we should not handcuff our city manager so that they have to ask us permission for every single project that they want to do, that they think is in the best interest of the city. By giving them a $30,000 cap, we've already done that. And that was, it worked for RENA, and it's working with Brett. And I think that you're going to basically, by telling a city manager, sorry, you can't spend over $10,000, especially when there may be challenges with personnel, and we have to get another natish involved to, and approve their contract, like, nope, got to do it again, got to do it again, got to do it. You can't do it unless we approve it. I think there's a certain point where we, as a council, become micromanagers of our city manager. And what city manager is going to want to come on board and manage a city if they can't do anything without our permission with every decision? And I think that the $30,000 limit, especially in today's climate, is appropriate, and it doesn't need to be touched at this point. I think you're going to hamper the next city manager we need to bring on by having that type of policy. That's my take.
Yes, thank you. No, I have a different take on that. And at this point in our existence, we are, I mean, we're struggling, we spent an hour plus... Started with Reina, I think, getting this approved two years ago, roughly. We've just continued with it, making adjustments related to SB 1383 was the last revision. With that, happy to answer any questions.
Are there no differences between this one and the previous one that Reina had that was approved?
Just the SB 1383 changes that you approved.
As far as the spending power, is it exactly the same as it was before?
It's the same, correct, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comment? Nope, go ahead.
I don't have any questions, I just have discussion.
I don't have any questions.
You don't have anything?
No, I'm just waiting to.
God, I'm shocked. So.
Public comment?
I do not have any public comment online or any cards.
Okay, public comment, right. I don't know, does anybody out there want to speak on this item? Yep, don't all rush up here. Okay, and there's no one online, so we will close the public comment on this item and bring it back.
Yeah, so I, I asked for this item, so thank you for that. I think you said it was 8A, but it's 8B, but regardless. You know, I think this is a policy that we had approved back when Reina was here, but in the, in the subsequent time, you know, what I've noticed is a trend that we are, you know, there's a couple of things that are different. One, you know, we've been more acutely aware of our financial position as a city. And two, the, the instances of spending under the policy, I think, warrants more scrutiny. And so as, you know, as a procedural matter, what we do is we look from time to time at the policy to see if it meets our needs. And, you know, for me, I, I, I think it's pretty clear that the engagement of consultants on things that are a gray area that I don't necessarily think we need to do, or certain spending that are not necessarily within the goals of the council, I think we need to have a, a more robust review of. And so what I would suggest is that we reduce the, the spend authority on the consultant piece only. There's two, there's two tiers, so there's consultant's piece and then there's the, I forget what we called it, but there's the second tier, but only affecting the first tier, I would say we reduce to 10. And then we also create a mechanism that anything of, you know, any consultant spend that is exercised under that gets some kind of periodic report out so that it's highlighted. I think the most recent example is either at the end of January of this year or the beginning of February, we engaged, we renewed or extended our existing contract with REPT. REPT is the, the platform for, you know, community engagement and the question, the Q and A component, yeah, Ask the City. And so what we did was we, you know, we, the, the total spend was exactly at the limit, so it didn't need to come to us for approval, it was exactly at $30,000 in total. And at the same time, it was for an 18-month period, and there's no cancellation for this, for this agreement. And so it essentially locks us in for this spend. And I'm not sure, maybe it's good or maybe it's bad, but I think that's something that we should really have a, you know, initially it was a pilot and it was like a couple thousand bucks, so it's like, okay, let's try it out, that seems fine. But if we're going to engage in a platform that is going to carry us for 18 months, then I think that's something that we should discuss, if that's the direction we want to go. And so it's thing, it's that, I mean, that's just one example, but it is of that nature that I think lowering the threshold would allow us to give better policy direction on those things. So that would be what I would suggest.
So, REPT, by all accounts, people I've spoken to in the citizen, the city have been highly, highly appreciated and reviewed. And the communication that goes between the city manager and his staff in answering those questions and how it's received has been incredibly positive. And, and it's been a great way for transparency between what the citizens want answered and the city staff, that, that we as council members, which wouldn't be answered, it's answered by staff. So, in that perspective, I don't see the REPT contract per se as being the reason for rescinding a, this $30,000 spend. Do you have another example of something that has less have to do with transparency in the city that I can, I can sink my teeth into?
Yeah, so like when we were in the, the Special Events Committee, you know, we have a budget established and then, you know, what we were told was we can exceed that amount by the authority of the city manager's $30,000. And I just think that the, with the direction that we're, we're going, with what we just talked about earlier in the evening, like, we need to demonstrate as a, as a council and a city, the, a level of fiscal rigor to really, to, to be convincing, to show that we're walking the walk, or is it, walking the talk is the expression. And I, I just think like having a, a looser spending policy doesn't support that goal. So, that's, I mean, we can disagree, but that's, that's why I think that way.
I think I disagree, I think that we hire a city manager to run the city. And there are certain things the city manager has to have the ability to do in order to run a city. We, as a city council, do not run a city, and we should not handcuff our city manager so that they have to ask us permission for every single project that they want to do that they think is in the best interest of the city. By giving them a $30,000 cap, we've already done that. And that was, it worked, it worked for Reina and it's, it's working, it's working with Brett. And I think that you're going to basically, by telling a city manager, sorry, you can't spend over $10,000, especially when there may be challenges with personnel and we have to get another natish involved to, and approve their contract, like, nope, gotta do it again, gotta do it again, gotta do it. You can't do it unless we approve it. I think there's a certain point where we, as a council, become micromanagers of our city manager. And what city manager is going to want to come on board and manage the city if they can't do anything without our permission with every decision? And I think that the $30,000 limit, especially in today's climate, is appropriate and, and it doesn't need to be touched at this point. I think you're, you're going to, you're going to hamper the next city manager we need to bring on by having that type of policy. That's my take.
Yes, thank you. No, I, I have a different take on that. And at this point in our existence, we are, I mean, we're struggling, we spent an hour plus discussing how we're going to fund everything. And I don't view it as micromanaging. $10,000 is not micromanaging. $50 is micromanaging. When I worked in corporate America, depending upon what rank in the, in the business you were, you're, you were given a certain latitude on how much you could spend and approve. $10,000 seems very reasonable for me at this point in our existence. It may change in six months, but at this point, I, I see that $10,000 is a reasonable limit. Any other input from?
You know, Councilmember Tillman has been asking for a certain item to come onto the agenda since October relative to the way we interact with not only our city manager, but our city manager's staff, and she's asked for this multiple times. And this item is superfluous relative to what she's been asking for, and it seems like a sharp poke in the eye to our city manager right now. And it's part of the reason that we have the culture that we have and that he has made the decisions he's made. I think we're going to have trouble finding good candidates if we continue to handcuff them the way that you're, you're trying to do.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Councilmember Tillman.
No, the only thing I was going to say is if we're looking at the full budget that we have and that the city manager has authority over, and then looking at the percentage of this limit that we want to place, it, it isn't laughable, it's, it's sad to me. I can appreciate wanting to have reports back periodically, I think that that's a good change to add to it, but I don't necessarily think that the, not necessarily, I don't think that the limit needs to be changed, I think $30,000 is, is, I think even we lowered it, didn't we lower it for, for Reina? I can't remember, did we increase it to that? I can't remember. Asking for periodic reports back is fair, but lowering it to me is, to Councilmember Cloven's point, they are going to have to come back over and over again. I think if you're saying that you want less contracts, less consultants, then it does become the opposite of what we just agreed to in the last item. With our reserve policy, the different buckets that we have, think about all of the work that we want to do with our goals and due for the residents, that's a lot of conversations and agenda items in late meetings if we're going, I mean, it could be on consent, but I would think that you want to have a report out from whoever's sitting in that seat, explaining the rationale for why they want to do it, and I just think $10,000 is going to bring them back to the table a lot more often. Our consent calendar is going to be really large. And given our full budget, I think it's, it's ridiculous to lower it to 10.
I just want to say I'm not as concerned about the amount so much as I had some similar ideas to Councilmember Juan. Maybe it would include quarterly reporting. I think it would be great to know who, I mean, Brett and I spend a large portion of our weekly meetings, me saying, what was this amount for? What was it, I'm looking at the checkbook, what is this amount for? What is, you know, so I think that would be helpful to have quarterly reporting and understanding what we're contracting for. I also think it has to fit into the budget, right? We can't be adding things, we're running at a deficit, we can't be adding things that are outside of the purview of the budget. And yes, I want them placed on the agenda, whether it's the consent calendar or, or of an action item, that before we're hiring consultants, that we know who they are and what they're for. So it's not so much the amount for me, is the reporting and knowing about who they are and why we're hiring them, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I think, I don't even know if we all have a good idea of the amount of consultants that we currently are engaged with on a reg, on the regular. And so like, having that, to me, is really important, like, just understanding what that is, because, you know, it's an area that could easily get out of hand, and if we're not, you know, if, if we're not looking at it holistically, then I, I think that's, that's problematic. So, like, as Mayor Diaz said, I think that that is the right thing to do right now. And if at a later time, it, you know, we find it's not necessary because some operational inefficiency or something like that, then I think we can change it. But that, that to me is, is, is the right move right now.
You're saying change the amount is the right move?
I think so. You know, essentially, when you have the threshold, when you have a limit, you're saying you can do an unlimited number of things at the threshold. So, you know, you could have, right now, you could do 40, $30,000 contracts a week. And, you know, that's not great, I mean, obviously, that's hyperbole, but, you know, so I, I just think having, when you, you bring up Reina, when Reina was here, you know, I would say, why are we having a consultant do this work? This is work that either is unnecessary or stashed to be doing. And she said, that's within my authority, I'm going to do it. And so I said, that is true, it is within your authority, I'm not in agreement, but that is, that is the authority that we've delegated, so, you know, that's it. So the way, the way to handle that is not to tell staff on a case-by-case basis, is to set the policy. So to me, it's, okay, well, if, if I can't influence by saying, you know, I, you know, I, I am disinclined to engage consultants at the level that we are, then the appropriate way to do that is to set the policy.
Yeah, and for me, it's not about the level, it's about knowing who the consultants are, I feel like if we build a policy around any new consultants have to come to the council, or at least be on the consent calendar so we can review their contracts and understand what they're being hired, I would be comfortable with that, I don't think it's the, for me, it's not the level so much, although, you know.
I could get behind that.
We wouldn't hire than that, I, well, I just want the knowledge of.
Yeah, I think, yeah, if we could say like, if you're engaging a consultant, then it needs to go on the consent or something, the next meeting. Whatever the next meeting is, put it on there. And, and then, in addition, like some quarterly or some longer period that says, here's the inventory of everything that's currently engaged. Like, that would, I think that would be fine, that would probably satisfy this angle.
I'm not opposed to having a reporting of the consultants that have been hired by the city manager, what I'm opposed to is you're handcuffing the city manager's authority to, to hire the consultants. I mean, when you can, when we continually make it challenging on the city manager to do their job by undermining their authority with their employees and our city staff, and they leave, and they are, then you tell them that to work twice as hard or three times as hard to do the work of that person who has left, and they need to hire a consultant to do the work and their job, I mean, you got to give them the ability to actually work for us. And by handcuffing them, so they can't hire somebody to do the work that the employees that have left because of the challenges that we bestowed upon them, you're not going to have a city manager. So, my, my, my point is, is I don't mind allowing them to report on who they've hired and making sure we're aware of that and what the purpose is, but don't hand, don't reduce their, their amounts. Therefore, you're, by doing that, you're saying, I don't trust you, I want to run this on your behalf. And that, I'm just, that's micromanaging. When you hire a city manager, you are instilling trust in them as a CEO to run our city.
They're, they're not a CEO, but.
But I'm just saying, that's, that's the analogy, that they're running our city and our employees. We're not.
No, that's true. And like I said, when, when Vice Mayor Trupiana was talking, like, I think if we can get the report out on the regular and have a periodic holistic look, I think that would be sufficient to me, because then you'd get the information, because really, that's what it is. It's like, do you know how many consultants we have? I mean, we should, so.
I'd be glad to ask for a report and, and say, could you, could you provide this next meeting? But that's, that's what a consult, that's, as a council member, that's my prerogative to ask for that, and, and if that's something we want on a regular basis, we can ask for that.
Yeah, and so I guess, so, that what I'm saying is, if we could, then I would, I would modify my recommendation to say that report out, that says if we engage a new consultant under this threshold, then at the very next meeting, we're adding it and, as a informational item to consent, actually, that, that doesn't make sense.
Why don't we include it in the, in the city manager's report when he has that opportunity?
Sure. Some information, some way that information is passed, and then on a periodic basis to have a holistic summary of what's out there.
Quarterly report, yeah.
Did you get your comments in?
But we're not lowering the threshold, we're just saying if it's under the threshold, we would like them to give a report out at the next meeting on who they're engaging or who they engaged since the last meeting, is that what we're saying?
Yeah.
And then an ask for who, a list of all the consultants that we currently have?
Yes. And I would, I'd be okay with that if we're leaving the threshold alone, if we, you know, have that as a requirement that we do. So, that would be the modification that I'd suggest then.
Direction we should give the staff?
I mean, as a part of the policy. Right? It's not an ask, it's a part of the policy, is what I'm saying. Does that make sense?
You want to change the language in the policy to.
So reflect that, yes.
Then I'd like to see the, the draft of the new policy with that, that new language in it, so we can look at it next time and, and confirm it.
Sure. So then I guess, then I would, I would ask, that my, my motion would be to direct staff to bring forward a policy that reflects that at the next meeting, and then we could review, look and vote on it.
Second.
Thank you. Anything further? Okay. Did I?
Yeah, motion second.
We're going to take.
Motion second.
Okay, move to second.
Pardon me, please call a roll. This is, agenda is as a discussion item? So they're creating direction, do we need to take a motion on that, or is this part of their discussion, since we did not do it the last time this happened?
We can take the motion on the item and then move it forward.
Okay. So on that motion, Councilmember Cloven?
Aye.
Tillman?
Aye.
Juan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Trupiana?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Yes.
Thank you, you have five ayes.
Anything else? Thank you very much. All right. Councilmember items for limited to requests and directives for future meetings.
Go ahead, Councilmember Tillman.
Oh, did you have one? Go ahead. Oh, okay. I would just reiterate the same request that I've had since October of 2023, which is for us to bring back to the council to discuss behavior from council members towards staff that could potentially be creating a toxic or hostile work environment. I've requested this several times, I would like us to engage an investigative party and to instruct the city attorney to do so. I sent an email earlier today to our mayor requesting the same in writing and asked for it to be brought forth on our March 19th, is that right? The right date? March 19th meeting agenda? Because it's, this isn't, this didn't just come out of the blue, I know I started talking about it last October, but I think everybody will recall that I asked probably in January of 2021 for us to have a 360 review of staff and council, for the staff to kind of give a, an evaluation of council and their interactions with them. And I said that and did that because I know that there's always been this, this friction between the two from prior councils before I was elected. And so that was one of the first things that I asked for in January of 2021, is to please, let's have this conversation where staff can review us and we can take that feedback and make changes. That has, that never happened, partially probably because we didn't really have an, an HR department that could facilitate that. But since that time, I've been talking to staff, several of them, current and present, who continue to have issues with this relationship, and it's something that we have to fix and we have to change to stop the constant turnover. It was, this isn't new, but it, we need to have a discussion about it to fix it. And so, to anyone who thinks that I'm making things up or I'm exaggerating, et cetera, the way to take me out of the equation and actually have it investigated is to do that. Let a third party that's neutral come in, talk to all the people that they need to, and it will become crystal clear that this is not made up, it's not for political reasons at all, we have a true issue that needs to be addressed. And I'm, I'm trying to do this to help us on a path going forward. So my ask is for us to discuss this per my request in my email today on our March 19th, 2024 meeting.
Any future items from anybody else? Hearing none, we're closed on that item, and we will move to council reports. Councilmember Juan?
I didn't really think about this ahead of time with a list. I think we met with the Special Events Committee, talked about the event that we did tonight. And then I've, you know, I'm continually engaging with folks, both via email and phone calls.
Thank you. Councilmember Tillman?
I will make this brief since it's late. I had a meeting on February 22nd with the AAUW members, the Clayton branch, we actually had a joint meeting with the Concord branch, both of which, or both of whom will probably be folding, possibly, their, their groups need to decide whether or not they want to continue on, both are under 15 members each, so currently, AAUW. And so, and I just drew a blank on what they are. American Association of, of, university, American Association of University Women, I could, university was not going to come out of my mouth, thank you. And so their choices are to either go another year and limp along, they have a lot of members who are older that have been serving for years, they've been doing it for the last three to four years, they're tired. So if there are any people who have gone to universities who would like to be part of this organization, they do a lot of, they used to do a lot of great things, one thing that they still kept, that this particular branch, our Clayton branch does, is they send three 7th graders to TechTrek, which is for students who are involved in science, there are three girls who are at the middle school, Diablo Valley Middle School, who are interested in technology. And they send them to Sonoma State for a week in the summer, and they pay the 1,500 bucks for them to go. The CBC also helps send students there as well, they help subsidize that. And so that's the one event that they put on, they used to do a lot more, and they're hoping that either people will join, they're either going to have to fold their branches, Concord and Clayton, and either merge with Martinez, Walnut Creek, Danville, I think there's a Martinez Pleasant Hill branch, and there's a Danville Walnut Creek like La Miranda branch, those are their choices. So it's possible that that can happen, and I will keep you guys posted. On the 28th, I attended the Trails Assessment Call with the TLC, the Trails and Landscape Committee. Our city manager spoke about that earlier tonight, we have our meeting next Monday. What's the time again, Brett? 6 o'clock?
I'll have to double check.
It's okay.
I think it's 6 PM, but I'll have to double check.
Monday, the 11th, here in Chambers, if you're excited about the trails and you want to learn more, you can attend that meeting. We do not zoom that one. On the 4th, I had my Mount Diablo Education Board meeting, I had meetings with Brett and Amy, meetings for Clayton Pride and our board. I've also been continuing to work with Con Fire on our Fire Wise meeting that we're going to have with Inspector Gittes. And I know that Jim Kirlerin spoke about this earlier, he is actually going to be hosting that visit at his home. The date right now looks like it's going to be April 10th at 3 PM. I'm sure he won't mind if I give out that address since it's for the community, and the address is 5010 Raven Way. So I will post about that, hopefully we can share stuff on the city website to get people to go. We are also looking for one more home in Dana Hills for Inspector Gittes to give people Fire Wise tips. We have an upcoming social event for Clayton Pride on March 16th, that's going to be at 5 PM at Roadside 22. And Kelly Cuisine, which is Chef Judy from Grove Side Bistro, formerly Grove Side Bistro, she now caters, is going to be providing the food, it's all St. Patrick's Day themed since it's on the 16th, and tickets are on sale, she's got stuff up on Facebook and social media if you'd like to attend that. And, what else? Oh, from our school district, the Northgate High School Women's Basketball Team, varsity made it to the NCS Championship game and they came in second place. made it to the NCS Championship Game, and they came in second place. And then they participated the following week in the state round, and they lost in that round. So that's my report.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Clovin.
I also got to enjoy Kelly Cuisine, Judy's good cooking at the Clayton Business and Community Association, CBCA meeting on the 29th. She does a great job as a caterer, so if you're looking for somebody, she did a great job with the Grove Side Bistro, but now she and Tiffany are doing a fabulous job as this cater for local events. And it was great being at CBCA, seeing all the folks and watching them give away money back to our community. I think it was the Trap Shoot team, as well as a Little League baseball team. Little League itself got funds and are always giving back, and it's great to be a part of that. Lots of conversations. I mean, at tonight, conversations about budget has had a lot of people asking me questions. And again, it was a fruitful dialogue, I'm glad tonight happened. I have a local high schooler who is putting together the logo for Clayton Cleans Up. I expect to have that, and we'll be putting out flyers in the next week or so, and then getting teachers printed up. But again, that is set for Saturday, April 20th.
Can I, can I ask you a question on that? I had someone from a local Boy Scout troop ask about, what's that?
Table?
Helping do stuff? Shall I send them your way?
Please, by all means, we're gonna have it like last year. There will be any, any local organization, and if you know local organizations, because I know Clayton Valley Village just reached out to me, any, if there's 4Hers out there or Girl Scouts or Cub Scouts that want to have a table, we'll have multiple tables around the courtyard.
Yeah, I think they want to like organize the whole pack to go do it, so they want to.
Please, by all means.
I'll send them your way.
It'll be meeting in the morning, 8:00 on April 20th with Donuts and Coffee Ready to Go and coming back. And Republic Services, again, will have a huge barbecue, will do, yep, they're gonna do the hamburgers and hot dogs and beverages, and we'll kind of have a community meal afterwards coming back and bringing back our trash and just talking. And this time, we'll have some, some music in the background, so it makes it a little more lively. So looking forward to it, it'll be a good event.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Trupiano.
Okay, I'll be as quick as possible. Councilmember Juan and I had a climate tech meeting with our city manager and our executive assistant, and climate tech is on schedule. Equipment is ordered, they're finishing up a water analysis, analysis, it's getting late. But we feel confident that things are going well. Later that, well, earlier that morning, sorry, it's same date, I took a tour with County Supervisor Ken Carlson and some other elected officials to the Contra Costa County Animal Shelter. And I have to say, it was heart wrenching. They, at that, on February 21st, they had 122 dogs, and I'm not even sure how many cats and kittens. So they, I just received a post from them today that they adopted 247 animals in February. So they are adopting a lot, but they said they cannot keep up with the intake. So I encourage you, if you're looking for a furry friend, they even had rabbits and little guinea pigs and all kinds of stuff, and a chicken. A chicken, a chicken, and a duck.
Horses.
Yeah, not that day, but they have them often. On Monday, the 26th, I was chairing the East Contra Costa Habitat Conservancy meeting out in Brentwood, came back here that afternoon for our city-sponsored Special Events Committee. And again, Stephanie, thank you, your help on that committee has been invaluable. I also met, oh, I went to the Elected and Empowered Women's Luncheon on the 23rd. I also met with a constituent who had some concerns, and our superintendent, Jim Warburton, met me out there, and he was just outstanding. I really cannot thank him enough, and I let Brett know what a pleasure it was to work with him on that. And then I had two meet, well, I have my weekly meeting with Brett every week, I sometimes forget to say that, but I had two meetings last week with PG&E. And one is our more operational representative. We're talking about kind of a path forward for, PG&E owns a lot of the streetlights in town, like over 300, and transferring those from sodium to LED, and kind of strategizing on a plan for that. We're working on a mapping project right now. And the very next day, I met with our new Government Affairs Representative, which is Brett Bedell. And I just want to make one announcement, is that next Tuesday at 6:30, also in Hoyer Hall, the Clayton Community Library Foundation will hold their annual meeting here at 6:30. It's open to all members and anyone in the community who wants to come out. And Brett, I believe you're going to be giving us an update on the library refresh?
Yep.
At that meeting, so thank you. And that's it.
Thank you so much. Very briefly, on the 21st, I attended the Contra Costa Water District Board Meeting, and they gave a very thorough analysis of their plans for the coming year. On the 22nd, I also went on the tour with Supervisor Carlson to the Contra Costa Animal Services Shelter. Very informative. On the 29th, I attended the Clayton Business and Community Association meeting. And then my final event was today with the city manager. That completes my report. We now have no closed sessions, so nothing to report there. And we will now adjourn at 11:42 PM until March 19. Thank you, good luck, good night. See you in the future.